There's a work session, so we've got the time.
I would love for there to be a standout tonight. We can make that decision tonight. That would be cool if we could get it, but that's not gonna.
There's a work session, so we've got the.
Oh, I would love for there to be a stand.
Can we delete that? I got you got that on film, I'm pretty sure. What?
Are we live?
No, we're live. I'm gonna watch the tape. I can't wait.
Do I need to stop and restart?
Uh, ask Dave. You're you're gonna end up on the Wiggins, you're gonna be you're gonna be on the Wiggins community business page.
David?
Yes.
Do I need to stop and restart?
No, you're fine.
I didn't hear what happened, so.
No, we were just, we were waiting for when it would go live versus not. You don't have to worry about that. We're good. Um, are the applicants coming here?
Coming here?
Or are they gonna be on Zoom?
Um, I'm assuming they're coming here if they didn't ask for anything else.
Okay.
I told them to come here.
Great, okay, I I. At the same time? Okay.
Good. That's good.
But that doesn't mean we won't show up early.
That is a good point.
How early? How much did you space them out?
Half hour.
Did you tell them thirty minutes apart?
Yep.
Okay.
Six thirty-five comes up then, all of a sudden.
Walk in.
Yeah.
Oh.
Those clocks are way off now. Nine minutes, they're nine minutes apart.
Okay.
All right, now I have a question. So especially because we're live. Um, what are we doing in the next twenty-five minutes before the first person arrives?
I gave you enough time to talk about questions you might wanna ask, so you asked that of each candidate. Or if there's questions you think might be candidate specific. And if you wanted to have any discussion about the applications or the process or even the applicants.
Yeah.
But but this is all live, right?
Yes, it's an open session.
Do we need to start the meeting now then?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Is the deliberation afterwards also live?
Uh, yes, because we, I talked to Melinda, there's really no way to do it in exact session.
Got it. Okay, you don't wanna do it tonight, Ruth?
Okay. Time is six oh six P M, October seventh, twenty twenty-one, Town of Wiggins Board of Trustees Special Meeting hereby in session. Start with. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get roll called in.
Trustee Bruce Miller?
Yes, here.
And trustee David Herbstman?
Here.
Trustee Brian Flax?
Here.
Trustee Jerry Schwint?
Here.
Trustee Mark Strickland?
Here.
Mayor Jeff Palmer?
Here.
Okay, next item is approval of agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as written.
I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Trustee Bruce Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Town David Hurstman?
Yes.
Trustee Brian Flax?
Yes.
Trustee Jerry Schwint?
Yes.
Trustee Mark Strickland?
Yes.
Mayor Jeff Palmer?
Yes.
Agenda approved. Next item is interviews to fill vacant board trustee position versus review applications. And discussion. So. Everybody get a chance to go over them.
I am wondering, uh, tonight, mayor and trustees, if we want to, like what Tom said, come up with at least a couple similar questions that we'll ask. Um, I think what we're dealing with here are two completely different approaches to the form, so we're getting, we basically got two very different applications, which is a good thing. But I think in order to show some consistency and integrity in the process, we should have a couple questions that no matter what, we ask both applicants, but I I think afterwards. I think we should have the open forum because it provided us to be able to ask them questions regarding what they wrote in the application as well, and any clarifying needs. I I'm wondering what the mayor and trustees.
I like that. Uh, I do have one question, um, that would be, um, so since they've been here in in the town since twenty nineteen. I don't know if I've seen either of them attend any of the meetings.
Yeah.
My question would be, uh, how many meetings have they, uh, been watching, uh, and focused on online? And what what did they learn from that?
Or even just what you've observed from, yeah, because I know one of the applicants has been on the, actually, both of them have been on at least once, because I've seen them in the list when they, for the attendees.
But I think that was just recent, wasn't it?
It was recent, but it's been more recent, which I guess is not a bad thing, but. But we should, I think that's a good question, Mark.
Do you want Deborah myself to kind of? Put these questions on the one page, or do you, one of you want to do that, refer you guys to them? The questions you wanna ask them?
Oh, yeah, we should have, uh.
Yeah, maybe if Deb has it, has, um.
So you wanna know how many meetings they've attended?
Well, watched.
Watched.
Partaking in as far as YouTube, or you know, they've gone back over all the.
Kind of find out how much background I know.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you could kind of group that into, kind of tell us what your understanding of the.
How much research?
Town's current situation, and you know, some of the things we're dealing with, I guess.
I like that.
Do we want to, uh?
One of them already kind of touched on that.
Sorry, sorry, go ahead. Bri- I I think you need Brian to.
Uh, yeah, I was just saying to kind of, you know. Either how many have you attended or or been a part of online? And with that, kind of what's your your general knowledge of, um. The the topics that's before us, um, I don't really know how how to word that, but, um.
Of town, uh, of town, uh, politics or town?
Of town projects and, um, resources, things like that.
Yeah.
And do you wanna know if they volunteered for the town?
Uh, that's a tough one to answer, because, uh, we have an incredible amount of volunteering that's taking place, so I'm not sure that's the. I mean.
I don't know if that's as a helpful question.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna yield what we want. But I, no, good, good thought, though. I am. Maybe a good question is, what is one thing that you would bring to the board that you are not currently seeing? Let's hear what they have to say. You you obviously have a reason why you wanna be on the board. Give us, tell us something that that you would bring that's unique to this board situation as well.
I'll type these up so that we can print them out for you.
But we only have half an hour. I mean, it kind of puts us in a position where we can't, too.
Yeah.
So maybe just to cut those couple structured questions, then basically a review of the application where we just ask more informal based on the responses, like what? Yes, yeah.
Was there resumes attached to these?
Uh, not attached to these responses, but I can pull them for you all off the Google form.
I don't know.
They're on the.
They're in the packet. They are in the packet.
The first applicant has his.
Packet for next week.
Application and then his resume and the second one.
I thought they were both on the bottom as PDFs. They are, well, they are in the packet, but the problem.
Yeah, it's not, you can't click on the, it just.
No, 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 you, uh, the most recent email that's, I think it accidentally said next week's agenda or something like that, but it is actually this one. So Chad's is there. So the resume is there for B O T Special Meeting twenty twenty-one, ten oh seven. Chad's resume starts on page number. Ten.
Gotcha, okay.
And then, uh, Chris's starts on page number, even though you're gonna, you have to zoom in on that one, on page number twenty-two.
Something that bothers me with this one is. Uh. I wanna know what we have, what as trustees, what we haven't done, tried to try to get long-term water.
Yeah, I think that.
We've done everything we possibly can. There's only, you only get so many.
Yep, it's, I think an individual doesn't quite understand what all it takes to secure those long-term.
I mean, we have done, we've gotten in with central water.
But it also means that they're not listening, because we we have shared that within the meetings. Now, I I do believe there's more that we can do.
Oh.
From a publicity standpoint, too, to get it out, and we've talked about that during town halls, uh, or or other things, but there seems to be a little bit of. Number six, there's a discrepancy between what's stated in the answer to the question and what are what we know as the current situation is today. Uh, and that's that, but hey, you know what? Bruce, in my humble opinion, that's a good thing, because then we get a chance in this interview to kind of point that out. You get asked this.
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, we've got, what, one point five million tied up now with central water?
Yep. And it seems to be a, an ongoing theme right now, doesn't it, Tom, that everybody's worried about our water situation, so.
It's getting.
Looks like we need to.
Some missing form.
We do need to get that out there.
Right.
To let people know that we are. We have water.
Top priority of us.
We're fine. We can handle the growth of Gaiwa Park. We can handle the growth of.
Of the Thomases.
The Thomases development.
And some commercial growth.
So.
And so we.
We're fine.
We were fine.
We gotta be a lot better, but we're we're fine for the time, for now.
For now.
We gotta look towards twenty years.
But we know it's impacted some of the work that's going on at Roberts, you know, words getting around, so we really do need to. And even if we get the naysayers still being naysayers, what we, what we say in our workforce in in our field, you're never gonna be able to really change a resistor. But for those others that are on the fence, that are in the middle, that we're not catering to right now, we really need to be focused in on those and those who know our situation. Because it is gonna be strength by numbers.
Yep.
The more that we get out, the more educated people are, the better we're gonna be as a town. And we worked hard as a board to get the spot. This this board.
And it comes money versus what we can actually do.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the bottom line.
And that's why I think maybe this answer, we're we're definitely gonna be asking when we get there with this individual.
I've got, here's what I've got for the question so far. Number one, how many meetings have you attended and or watched? And what is your current understanding of the issues the town is facing?
I don't know if issues is a good.
Challenges?
Challenges.
Yeah.
Challenge is better than issues, for sure, or, uh.
Well, one, should we state what kind of general subject of challenges?
Probably.
Kind of narrow that down?
Yeah.
So we're not generalizing it too much, since we are limited to thirty minutes?
In the ones questionnaire, you said there doesn't seem that the town is. The town board's being very creative in ways to generate money for parks and infrastructure and all that. So why don't we make another question? What creative ways would you? Like, to bring to the table to generate this? Money we're needed to expand our infrastructure and roads and.
That is awesome. Let's preface that question with something like a statement before that question, so to make it clear, so they know exactly what they're answering. So as you, as you are aware, we're, uh, in in a small town setting, it's, we have, I hate saying the word challenges again, but it's all I can think of. It's like, we have specific challenges in in terms of being able to generate revenue to be able to improve things like parks and infrastructure. Please tell us your creative idea, sorry?
Or constraints?
Yeah, we have, there's constraints to being able to raise funds necessary to improve our parks and infrastructure. Please tell us your creative ideas.
Yeah.
For, that's, that's, I think your question is solid there.
And and you know, I don't think either one of these guys have watched very many meetings, because the other guy says, uh. To sustain growth, you have to have good mixture of businesses and homes.
What we're shooting for. So you are correct, but.
And then how would you?
Currently, town has no infrastructure growth and no businesses coming to town.
And that's actually not true.
We are putting a new pipe underneath it.
Yeah, and we've got the expansion of Stagecoach, and we've got with them leasing.
A potential sale up there that that could potentially be a benefit for us, those acres that are up north. We still got the hotel, which it seems to be close.
And with the, with them doing, uh, leasing the building on Main Street with Stagecoach, that's going to bring a storefront.
Yep, retail.
Retail storefront to our main street.
I'll be shopping.
As far as the processing of.
Yeah, I'll be, yeah.
I'll be shopping there. Fresh jerky. Mmm. Say a little lot of mmm.
I'll buy those twelve times a year, I think.
So the guys also did ask, Tom, what is one thing you will bring to the board that's unique to this situ- to our situation?
Yep.
Yeah.
Just bring, yeah.
Yeah, which, another one is, how do you, what do you feel is the reason why businesses? Aren't quick to jump on Wiggins? I'd like to know what they, why they think it's not there.
I think that, as much as I like that, that's going to get asked naturally when we get to the review of application section. Because both of them sort of have a little flair in their application, so I don't think that needs to be a structured question. I think we're gonna get there naturally in the review afterwards. So we have some, we have that formal section and the informal. I think we're gonna get there on that. I think we'll just get it naturally.
And want to see what they, what they think is the reason. I think I, I think I know what the reason is.
All right, it's a lot different when, on this side. Once you sit back here and you start getting into the depths of what what it means to, to run a town, it's.
And without saying it, I'm saying it, whenever I get my coupon, as they call it in the mail in April, that tells me what stops businesses from coming to Wiggins. That little blue piece of paper that says you owe X amount. If we could. If we could as a board figure out how to handle that, I think we'd see it. An influence.
Yeah. Wouldn't that be more in a county level?
But we can, we as a board can. Can put forth, you and I talked about that. Give them, you know, I mean, they would eventually have to pay a hundred percent of what's the mill levies and all that, but we could give them incentives.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Better.
So we give businesses an opportunity to actually plant their stakes here. That makes sense, that makes sense.
Since we're, since we're getting close, let me read the questions.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
How many meetings have you attended and or watched? And what is your current understanding of the challenges? To? Improve the tent community?
Oh, it's challenges to, read that again.
How many meetings have you attended and or and or watched? And what is your current understanding of the challenges? How we said, just the community faces.
Yes, that's right, say the community.
That's perfect.
Yeah. State of Wiggins, like what?
The state of Wiggins.
Yeah.
What state?
Home rules, they are gonna get you.
Not literally state.
I know, I know.
Like where we stand.
Yeah, Wiggins on its own, state of two thousand people, and it's all.
And then the second one, what would you bring to the board that you think may be needed or lacking?
Yep, um, our first individuals here, Tom, you wanna just, do we wanna just kind of quickly go through these in a minute?
Yeah, just a second.
He's coming.
If you could give us one more, couple more minutes, please. Thank you.
Thank you, good evening.
Okay, what would you bring to the board that you think may be lacking? Then third question, what do you think the board has not done to to secure long-term water supplies? Or to further economic growth?
Yep, like it.
Is that kind of geared more towards one individual, though, since one individual put that in their response?
Yeah, we have to be a little bit careful that we're.
Like, I don't know if we wanna specifically dive into one particular.
But we can, but the topic should be dived into.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could say the water and sure.
So how do you, what's your suggestion?
Yeah, I I think the first part is good, you know, what, what do you feel you can bring to the board that it's lacking now?
Right.
And, um, what ideas do you have to?
I've got, as you're aware, Wiggins is a small town with limited revenue for infrastructure, parks, and other amenities. What creatives can you suggest to increase revenue?
Yes, that's, that's great.
Sounds good.
Do you wanna just go with those three?
Yeah, let's just, yeah, because then it's, then we can target it based on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, cause I can look through their questionnaire.
You're getting.
Are we ready?
Yeah, no, I'll print this and bring this back in, and then.
Cause the first one is. Yeah, right?
Right, yeah. And then I am going to excuse myself.
Okay, so you're gonna print it out so we all have the.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then question is, do you want Deb to stay to take the notes, or do you want her to?
Probably shouldn't, probably. And have the town clerk here.
And then I may go to the school bond issue.
I want you to. Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
So, um, and then, so I may or may not be back by the time you're finished, but you can text me if you need me back and I'll, I'll come back. I have no idea how long that, um, meeting's gonna last.
There's one thing you could, if you get an opportunity, you could reiterate our water.
That's why I'm going.
Oh, not yet.
What?
I was trying to figure out which printer he was printing to, actually.
One to each printer.
You said that's not funny.
Maybe we could ask one that was, yeah, on the question.
It wouldn't be funny to, it's funny because it's not.
Not that you know.
Do we, we wanna maybe ask those those three first, and then if there's still time remaining, we could ask one that's on the questionnaire?
Yep.
Cause I'm thinking three questions may not take thirty minutes.
That's exactly the point. You go through the three that are written.
Interview, ten minute.
Devine, three that are written, then it's an informal discussion.
I know, I got. Yeah, cause I've got questions about some of the responses.
That I don't wanna say just yet. But then there's others where the other applicant didn't really put that much down, and so we're gonna need to ask for, you gotta give me more. Then that's what it is. The other person needs to hang in there for a couple minutes, but I do think to be reasonable, if we get like ten minutes over, then it's probably time to go. I think that's enough.
And you can, you can discuss everything after.
Afterwards, but we do wanna make sure we get everything out that we want, right? This is an important decision, so you're right, Bruce. I'm with you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Go advocate for water.
All right.
At least it's nice though. Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, come on, come on to the.
Is that Mike?
Is the mic on?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I'm just following the sign on the door. I don't want to wear masks.
It's, it's your choice.
You wanna take it off, go for it.
And we're, and you're socially distanced from all of us. If you would like a screen, just, no, just kidding. All right, thank you very much.
Now, we can, whoever wants to. Yeah, we can start in here.
Okay.
Hello.
Okay, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna grill, grill, no. Reprint the paper, I think.
It's pretty intimidating, really.
Oh, that's the idea.
We don't look that.
There's a big, there's a big crowd behind you, too, so.
I know the feeling.
I used to, I used to come to that side quite a bit, so. So welcome.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
And you wanna go ahead and introduce yourself, and then we'll introduce ourselves.
Sure, so my name's Chad Forbes. I've, uh, lived in the town here for a couple years. Uh, originally born and raised in the county, uh, Fort Morgan, graduated Fort Morgan High in two thousand and two, uh, moved to Denver shortly thereafter that graduation. And got sick of that and ended up back here, but during my time in Denver, I still, I actually still commute. I work in the area. And I've had, uh, some great opportunities over the years and, uh, kind of have worked my way up into some management roles and some really cool projects, uh, and so. I didn't really intend to stay in Wiggins. Um, I kind of bought the house, and it was kind of one of those, let's see what happens, uh, but the town has really grown on me. Um, and the prospect of selling the house at this point just doesn't sit right. I love it, um, and so I wanted to become more involved in the community.
All right, wow. Well, pleasure to meet you, Jen.
Thank you, you too.
Mayor Jeff Palmer?
Um, Mayor Pro Tem David Herbstman.
Trustee Mark Strickland? Trustee Bruce Miller.
Trustee Brian Flax.
Trustee Jerry Schwint.
Awesome, great to meet you all, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your interest in, uh, getting involved in the government and serving the people, so.
I have to admit, it's a first. It's not something that really ever crossed my mind.
No.
My family doesn't really know that I've even gotten this far, so I think they would all be really shocked.
Just, just give you a heads up, small town politics is kind of like big city politics. It's politics, so.
You guys don't always agree on everything?
What? We talk everything else. And and that is one good thing about this board. I've been on a couple other boards, but this board here, we talk things out. And we always come to a mutual understanding.
That's, yep, yeah.
And I think, to me, that's the epitome of a successful government, if you will, is you may not get everything you want, but I think is, if there's a a common ground that can be struck. And you're at least somewhat happy, I would say that's success, anymore especially.
Yep, I think I can attest for as mayor, every member of this board has the best interest of Wiggins. At heart and in mind, so I mean, that's what we're looking forward to replace the vacant seat as well is. The best interest and how we go about getting to those interests.
Yeah, I think that's really hard to separate and I've reflected on that. Uh. It's, it's not really about what I want necessarily. I think it's about, as you said, very well put, it's about the interests of, of the constituents.
Mayor, do you want to go ahead and read off the question?
Sure.
How many meetings have you attended and or watched and what is your current understanding of the challenges the community is facing?
Sure, so I unfortunately, the time, about the time I really took interest and wanted to start attending COVID happened, so. Uh, but I've kept a really close eye online about what happens. Uh, and I've watched. Honestly, probably every meeting that's happened online since I've gotten to Wiggins, which like I said, was a couple of years back. Um, uh, you know, obviously the big concerns facing the town, I think is the water sewer situation. I think. The continued growth or, you know, as I mentioned in my application, the decision that I think the town has to make as to whether. We're going to kind of stay where we're at or continue down that path. Um, I think those are some of the biggest challenges. It seems like uh, the board's done a pretty good job or a great job really of, of getting the police department situated. I know that was a, a struggle or in a challenge for a while, so I'm happy to see that. I, I think that uh. You know, budget is always, I think, gonna be an issue for a smaller town. It's a challenge. I get that. Um. And, and I just think those are the bigger challenges that I see.
Yep, yeah, cause uh, actually not too many years ago, um. This board, not this board, but the previous board that I sat on, we were having to take money out of the water and sewer fund. And appropriate to the general fund. Since the, the, the people voted for this board, we've done. I think a great job and was having, Tom, he's not here right now, but for the first time, what, two years in a row now, we've increased. Revenue, revenues and we're finally into positive, so.
Which is great. That's exciting.
It was, yeah, it took a lot of hard work, so. I just had one that I'd like to, cause when I was reading through as the mayor. You stated that you dissent from the mayor that roofs do not equal dollars. Are you referring to me or the previous mayor?
Both. Uh, I've heard both mayors say that. I've heard you say that, at least in the past. Um, roofs equal dollars, maybe not necessarily in the immediate sense, but in, in the sense of, of sales tax and things like that.
Yeah, cause I've been a, I've been very ad, I was outspoken before Tower Park ever came here. That roofs do not equal dollars. I mean, in the, in the beginning, they do. Wiggins has seen a, quite an influx with our building permits and our water and sewer taffees. But in the long run, it, it costs more. Um, there's a study out there that for every hundred dollars gained in property tax, costs the city a hundred and fifty dollars to maintain. The roads, the infrastructure, the water, the sewer. So I've, yeah, as a, as a mayor. No roofs, to me do not equal dollars. Commercial equals dollars, but you need the roofs. Also with the businesses, but it's a, that, that there's a, it's a fine line.
Sure, and I, I, I have to tell you, I think having hearing you say that, I, I think we're on the same train, uh, just maybe different. Way of saying it. I completely agree. A roof may not equal raw revenue. I, I completely agree with you. The roofs drawing commercial in turn then generate revenue. I, I think we're on the same train, so.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
Read this. Yeah, well, let's go, let's go to second question. What would you bring to this board that you think is lacking currently?
Geez, that's uh, that's tough. I, I actually, I, I.
Besides good looks.
I, I, nobody's arguing that.
We're not gonna have a calendar this year, huh?
They just let me take my sack off a couple of meetings ago. Got a good sense of humor on this board.
Oh, man, this isn't supposed to be fun.
But no, seriously.
But seriously, that, boy, that's tough. Um. I have a lot to bring to the board and I think that's a, a, an interesting viewpoint of having been born, raised in a rural agricultural community. But then having been in the city, I, I actually lived in Atlanta for a short time and that was a huge mistake. Uh, and. Just some different point of view. I have a very well-rounded resume, I think, that has exposed me to a lot of really cool things. I'm very grateful for that. To go into the second part of that question though, is, is what is the board lacking? Honestly, I, I have to agree. I think you have a great group of people now. I, 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 I think some of the changes that have occurred over the last two years have been. Very good and welcome. I, I can't say is there's anything that at this instant is, is completely lacking. I, I, I think that. I want, I would like to help keep the momentum going, you know?
Uh, just a follow-up question. Thank you first and foremost. The only follow-up question I have is. So you've lived kind of in the Denver metro area for a bit, so you have a bit of an urban feel along with living, living and loving rural Colorado. I can attest to the same thing. I'm. But I actually grew up in like more of a suburban, urban situation and have grown to love rural Colorado, so and I embrace it. The question to you is, what have you learned from your experience, like working and also living in a more metro area that you think Wiggins? Um, number one, that, that, that might, that could apply to Wiggins in the future or what? Uh, just anything you think that you've learned from your previous experience that you think that Wiggins either could benefit from, uh, just in regards to that.
Well, I, I, I have to kind of reverse that in the sense of I can tell you all the things that are terrible ideas.
Yeah, but that works too. I was, I was trying to get that out and I couldn't, but yeah, but, but yeah, but same, but I mean, really, yeah.
Being serious. A- as I said, I, I really feel strongly that this town is at kind of at a, a very unique time of a crossroads of which way are we gonna go? I don't, truthfully, I don't really have a preference either. As long as whichever fork we go, it's, it's responsible. And I think that's what I have to say about being in the front range is I, I'm all for responsible. Methodical growth, not let's just start swinging hammers everywhere. It, it, it just doesn't work. I think that you have to think ahead and. That's one of the, that's, I, I think, kind of going back to the last question, if there's one thing that I think is important. And, and where I would really like to see the board focus is, is perhaps maybe a little longer term. And, and further down the road. Um, and I mean that more towards prior boards that I think have missed opportunities and things that. And I don't want to get into that, but that's kind of what I'm hitting at.
What, what would you say long-term?
In city planning, long-term is a long time, ten years plus.
We are uh, looking at, or I think we've already applied or in the process of applying for a grant. That's gonna head us down the road towards making a comprehensive plan. Uh, our last comprehensive plan, uh, you might know is, well, is thirty years old. Ninety-one, ninety-two. And so ultimately, we have an opportunity here to do exactly that and it's. It is, I think, one of our top priorities, the board that we discussed, make a new comprehensive plan.
Yeah, if you watched in on what, two meetings ago?
I think that's actually why we made the motion to.
Yeah, to get our comprehensive plan for our long-term.
It's important.
Yes.
It's huge.
Huge. Okay, um.
Um, as you're aware, Wiggins is a small town with limited revenue for infrastructure, parks and other amenities. Uh, what creative ways could you suggest to increase revenue? That's a challenge. That, that is, that's a nice cup. Where'd you get that? Um, that is the challenge and I actually, I think it's important that y'all know that I didn't go into this kind of haphazardly and just think, oh, this is something cool. I should go do it. I've thought a lot about these things and, and that's something I, I, I've thought a lot about and, and I just, it's hard. Because of the size of the town, it's hard to levy fees, it's hard to change tax revenue. It's hard to do that and it's hard to figure out. Where to go from there. I don't have the answer to that, unfortunately. I understand the situation with selling the property to kind of use that for some things. In relation to parks and, and things like that. I, I have mixed feelings about that, but uh. I, I, that's tough. I don't know. I don't have the answer. I'm sorry. I, I think one question I'd have to just kind of piggyback on the second question about uh, what you'd bring that the board may be lacking, I guess. Another way to, to ask that would be kind of what, what kind of strengths would you bring and ultimately, my question would be. Why do you want to be on the board? Cause like you said, and like they said, nobody grows up dreaming to be on city government, so. So ultimately, it takes, you know, it takes a certain person to want to, to do that, so I guess, is there something that really drew you to that or? Uh, I oversee, so I, so the company I work for is a, a car wash firm across the front range. Uh, I started with them and they had six locations. They're now at uh, eighteen and like eight more under construction. So it's been a rapid growth. And the cool thing about that is I'm proud to say I'm at the helm of that. I report directly to the CEO. So as far as in terms of hierarchy, I'm as high as it goes within the company. I have eighteen people that report to me. Um, I oversee the daily operations and so just the exposure to that has really given me a, a kind of a keen eye on how to develop. How to manage a large-scale multimillion-dollar commercial project, um, from dirt to wash, uh, and that's, that's been really cool. And I think that just uh, figuring out how to circumvent all of their crazy policies and rules and code over there. And deal with that, um, has been uh, challenging, but it's been a lot of fun and it's afforded me some of those. Opportunities and, and ways to like I say, circumvent some of the challenges that we uh, see. Um, I mean, if anybody would know, you know what permitting is like in a major metropolitan area. It's, it's just insanity, the compliance and all of that jazz, so. Um, the why is, uh, kind of I said in the opening, I feel a connection to the town and I really care about it. Um, I've gotten to know a, a lot of people uh, in, in the area. Um. You know, I, I worked with Stan, you know, with the house and, and Bo and everybody and it's, it's uh. It's, it's been cool and like I say, I just, I, I feel a connection and sort of a responsibility to do it. I feel like I'm the right fit. And so, I don't know, I just, I, I felt like it'd be a good opportunity. I love to learn. Um, I love learning new things. I can't stand here and profess to tell you all that I know everything about how a municipality's ran. Um, but I'm pretty sharp and I can usually pick things up pretty quick, so.
I have a question. Since he's dealing with the same issues we deal with, we deal with people coming in, building houses. You're putting up car washes?
Yes.
So you have to deal with the same raw material called water and availability of water. What is your long-term plan for that? You've increased huge amount of locations. I'm sure water's your major unit that you use.
Water is a hot button issue everywhere, obviously. And we have talked at length about this in a lot of the executive meetings, uh, and the plan, we have some. We've, actually, I'm really proud of what we've accomplished. We've really had some creative sessions where we've thought about this. Most of the sites when we took them over had no reclamation or reclaim of any of the water, so it just all went down the drain. Almost all the washes now have some sort of reclaim system, so we're, some of the washes are close to a hundred percent. Particularly the long, so when I say car wash, the long tunnel type that you, they pull you through, those are easier to do. We can reclaim almost a hundred percent of that. When you get into the self-serve and the in-bey automatic washes, those are harder because there's pits and there's solid waste and there's a bunch of other complications with that. Um, but even those, we've installed systems in almost all those locations. Uh, to further that a little bit, uh, one of our more difficult municipalities, believe it or not, is Fort Collins. Uh, we have started to work with them. In buying shares. It's kind of interesting, so um, that is still in the early stages. Uh, so I can't speak a lot about it, but that's one thing that we started to look at to kind of save us the long-term. Uh, you know, uh, challenges that are gonna come with water, as you said, so.
I just have one thing. As a newer resident to Wiggins. Um, me, I'm fifth generation Wiggins resident, so my roots run deep. So for me, it's sometimes maybe I'm blind to seeing some things, maybe I'm not, but in your, you made a comment of a. A division in the town. Where do you see that division and where do you think it comes from?
I have to say that I, I, I feel pretty strongly that that has improved, but I will say that the, the first, uh, you know. I would say six, twelve months that I was here, I felt pretty strong that uh. There was kind of a, over there and over here, uh, and being new to the town, it was, it was a little bit disappointing. Um, you know, because at the end of the day, we're all citizens of the same town.
Yep.
Um, as, as far as where that came from, I, I don't know. I, 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 I will say that I observed some of it in some of these. Uh, meetings, um, you know, and that's all I really have to say about that.
Okay, do you know, you feel it's getting better?
I, I, absolutely. I wouldn't be standing here if I still felt that way because I don't want to be part of, you know, that type of situation.
Well, the division is no longer here. What was, in my mind, was causing that division? So, once we got rid of that, we were able to hopefully start mending the bridges and, and realizing. Take the old town with the, with the new town is what we'd call it and say we're, we're just one nice small town. No matter which neighborhood you're growing up in right now, it's all Wiggins, so.
I'll be the first to say too, I, I won't, I won't tolerate the reverse either though, because there are, I feel at times people. Uh, that uh, may be newer, that kind of have a sense of entitlement and I won't agree or support that either, so.
That's good to have that balance. Um, we still hear rumblings now and then about the here and there statement, so we know that it's not gone. Uh, as a board, but then again, I, I, I think the community involvement, there's some ideas coming from this board, uh, about getting more. Getting together and um, maybe doing community activities, maybe next year doing a harvest festival type deal. And food truck, yeah, the food truck situation, July fourth every year. And so, like. What, what would you do to bring all parts of the town together? Like, how would you represent us as a board to ensure? That the residents that do live maybe on closer to the north side of town, to the south side of town, newer versus, you know, several generation versus newcomer. Cause I, I live that. I've only lived in Wiggins for about eight years, even though my in-laws homesteaded here. Right, so, so I mean, what are your thoughts in terms of how you would try and unify or continue to unify this town, keep that going?
I think uh, the same as I, you would your employer really for that matter, and that is, is uh, being a good steward and uh. Not acting a fool, especially when you're uh, representing the town. Um. But to further that, I do have some thoughts on that. And one of those is, is when I moved here, I made a promise that I would try to, to be as local as I could. And I feel pretty proud to say I've, I've done a good job of that. I shop at Wiggins Supers when I can. I shop down at Stubbs when I can. Um, CHS, even though they're not really local, but um. Uh, do it best. I know Trish and Robert well, just from going in there all the time. Oh crap, I forgot talking. I gotta run down. So, um, I, I can't tell you how many times I've seen Stan or Bo in there. Hey, just saw you. So, um, I think just supporting uh, the town and, and uh, making that presence. But also being at those events that you talked about, Fourth of July, being out there, if, you know, whatever events or. Uh, strongholds of the community are happening, I think being a part of that is kind of to me, an unwritten expectation.
Now, you'd a ton more people to have that same feeling.
I can't, I mean, you know, I mean, we all have lives outside of, of these things and I, I can't, you know, even my situation, I'm. Pretty busy at work. I can't profess that I'll be at every single uh, event, but I'll do my darndest and you know, that's another reason I. Uh, felt like this was a good fit because I'm like, the timing just makes sense. I'm usually back here by four, so it, it, it just seems to all work out.
Anybody else? You got anything, Bruce?
No, it was a good interview. Good interview. Yeah, my questions already been answered, so.
Okay.
One other question. Are you ready to have other eyes on you?
Turn around.
Reason I say that is because you will have.
That is uh, that's one of my least favorite parts of, of being in a, in a public office, I'll be honest, and I'm sure that probably goes for anybody. I accept that and I, that kind of ties into the question about being on your best behavior at all times because you never know who's watching. Um, and, and, and working. Um and and working for the company that I work for, I, of course, they graffiti me with all the insignia. And so every time I go somewhere, I I really can't go anywhere without somebody saying, oh my God, I love you guys, or, oh my God, I hate you guys, you know.
Try driving a truck that's plastered with it.
You say that, but hey. That stuff. So I I get it. Um you know, it I I think it's it's par for the course. It just comes with it.
It's just tough that you represent more than just yourself and people are looking at you.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. What you say, you. Don't expect you can please everybody. Let's put it that way, because you're not going to. I mean, you're never gonna, you're never gonna be able to please. Everybody, because when you start to please this one, you're gonna make this one upset, so.
Very true.
They'll let you know.
Yeah, no, they'll let you know, yes.
But it's also double sided, because you also have the opportunity to make change or to implement ideas and things like that, that you hear from the public.
Well, and them letting you know is how you kind of know where to steer the ship, though. Like I said, it's not always about personally what you want. I wish Congress would listen to this.
We don't wanna go there.
I retract. But it it's not always about what you want. It's about, you know, like I said, the the consideration of the best interests of of the people that you represent. And I feel like.
That's the bottom line.
In DC, they forget.
Oh, it's all about personal. But no, seriously, that's great that you have that perspective. Seriously.
Okay, I'm good. I just, I guess I had one last question. So under communication, you did not select phone and text. Do you not like phone calls and text messages?
Okay, so I I I believe there was probably simply a misunderstanding on my part. I I took the question as what is your top preference? Those are all fine.
Okay, okay.
It's all going to your smartphone anyway, most likely.
Cause if you get in in this position, they're gonna call you or text you or email you, so.
Sure.
They're just gonna, yeah.
Yeah, but that's something that the town does not ever give out your phone number.
No.
They will call you and ask you, can I give your phone number to Joe Blow? And if you say, no, I'm not interested, then they'll have to get a hold of you somehow. They'll have to.
Knock on your door.
Yep.
And that's that's how we work at it, where I work.
That's the way.
Girls will say, hey, so and so is trying to reach you. Should we give them your number?
All right, well, thank everybody. I'm good.
Satisfied.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you all for your time. I really.
Thank you very much.
In your application.
Yes.
Thank you. If you have any questions, feel free to reach me. I'll have my contact information.
We're gonna be in touch, so we're gonna deliberate afterwards and we'll. Yeah. We'll notify you what's gonna happen next.
Tom, Tom will probably get a hold of you tomorrow.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
We should uh probably not deliberate on this one till after the next applicant's done, then we can do that. It's already six fifty-seven anyway. So we probably, best practice would probably be just to go to the next interview.
You know, I think we can lump them together and.
See.
Yeah, time to scroll down, everybody.
Yeah, get off of this one.
Oh, were they communicating out there? I think you just got picked up off the ground. No, no, no. You two, did you two run into each other on your way in and out?
Okay, well, come on up. Go ahead and uh introduce yourself and where you live and a little bit, a little bit about yourself.
Okay, my name is Chris Franzen. I live on Johnson Street in Kiva Park. I work in the oil and gas industry. I own a landscape company and I also have rental properties. So I stay pretty busy. Um I'm originally from Nebraska. I moved to Fort Morgan in nineteen ninety-five. So I call Fort Morgan home. I graduated high school from there. After that, I moved to Greeley. Um lived there for quite a while and then have lived in Wiggins for two year, over two years now. Uh twenty nineteen, we built a house in Kiva Park and moved back to small town America, so. That's pretty much the gist of my background right now.
I'm Mayor Jeff Palmer.
Uh Mayor Pro-Tam David Herbstman. Trustee Mark Strickland.
Trustee Bruce Miller.
Trustee Brian Flax.
Trustee Jerry Schwent.
And thank you for submitting your application and having some interest in small town government.
Yes.
I guess I'll start with the first question for you. It's uh, how many meetings have you attended or watched? And what is your current understanding of the challenges our communities face?
So I've watched probably the whole last year's meetings. I've been live on some of them, but some of them I watch. Just later in the week, whenever I have time. Um so I've paid attention to the last year of what's going on. I'm the president of the Kiva Park HOA, so I'm pretty involved in a lot of different things and I know. A lot about what goes on in the town. Um right now, I think the biggest issue this town faces, in my eyes, is the water. Not the lack of water, but how the water is being treated and upgrading that whole treatment system. Just to have better quality water and more, you know, holding capacity. Um in aspects of that to enable good treatment of water and a timely phase um to treat it. Another thing I think the town uh could definitely look at is um. We have a lot of houses going up, but we don't have a lot of businesses. It's it's nice to have houses, but you gotta kind of balance that a little bit with some businesses. Um restaurants, you know, places like that. Um I believe in small town. And I don't want Wiggins to get big, but you can be a small town and still grow conservatively. So I think infrastructure is another thing this town could really do a lot or could help this town a lot. Um job wise and just, you know, places for people to go. I've talked to every business in this town and I think with the growth in this town, I think they're. Striving now and they've gotten to a point where their revenues are where they want to be to where they don't feel like they may have to close the doors. Um so I think a little more infrastructure down the road would really benefit this town.
Yeah, that's what has been, if you've been paying attention, that's been.
Yeah.
A major focus of this of this board is is increasing our commercial. Uh establishments.
Yep.
Um so I guess, what do you feel, I'll lead off to that question, what do you feel is preventing? The growth of businesses in Wiggins? Cause what do you think, what do you think is stopping businesses from planting in Wiggins and and flourishing? Cause we obviously got the, got the houses, so we've got some rooftops.
I don't. I don't know how, if I have a pinpoint answer, I just. You have to have the right businesses to wanna come in here. And a lot of businesses want a town to have a certain amount of people. I think what Wiggins as a town needs to do is sell ourselves as Morgan County. Include Fort Morgan, Brush, Wiggins, Rogan, whatever, to show somebody like, hey, we combine all these. We have this amount of people and these people will travel to Wiggins to shop here. We all travel to Fort Morgan. We go to Brush for stuff. I go to Hardware Hank's to rent equipment. So it's it's not like we're not willing to go to a different town to get something. So I think a selling point possibly would be selling us as as Morgan County. Um look at all the, we have a bunch of people that live outside of the town of Wiggins, a bunch of people. And those people use the resources in Morgan County. A lot of these people want to shop local. So I think if, you know, a lot of these jobs, they want, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand residents, and we obviously will never get there. So we need to sell ourselves as Morgan County and I think go that route. To to see what we can bring into the town.
See, we are currently with Morgan Economic Development and we meet once a month. And they have, Morgan County has accepted Wiggins.
Yep.
Finally, finally, because of the new board.
Yeah.
The old board really didn't want anything to do with Morgan County.
Well, and and we have to come together as a county, because we're two smaller towns.
Bottom line.
And I grew up in Nebraska and if you don't work together, small town will go away. And there will be nothing here. Um there are small towns in Colorado that are happening. Well, Donna. Back when I was in high school, Well, Donna used to be a decent town and there's nothing there anymore. So. As a county, if we can be with Fort Morgan and Brush, Well, Donna, Hill Rose, those places. I think our success rate is astronomical.
Snyder.
Yeah, Snyder.
All right, well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Uh so I've got the next one. Uh what would you bring to the board that you think might be lacking? And or just in general, I guess the first part of that is, wha- what do you think you're gonna bring that's unique to the board? And then obviously, if there's anything that's lacking as well.
I think I'd bring an outgoing personality. I love talking to people. I love hearing people's opinions, even if they don't like me.
Get used to that if you get on.
President of the HOA and I have people stop by my house all the time. They call me, they text me. You know, I I love being a part of this community and I love hearing what people have to say. I think coming from being the president of HOA. With the majority of the people right now, you know, living in Kiva Park, I have that relationship with those people. And I have a relationship with a lot of the old town people through church and just being out and about. I go out of my way to talk to people and meet people and tell people who I am, because. I think I can benefit this town. By getting everybody's opinions together, whether they're good or bad. Opinion is an opinion. And we need to take, you know, I feel like in, take that and bring that to the board and we can work together. As a town, not Kiva Park and Wiggins and and grow in a conservative manner to keep that small town value.
And when you mean by conservative manner. How do you think we would be able to maintain a conservative manner and still grow?
So I, as a town, we need to continue to grow with houses. But it doesn't need to be, let's build two hundred houses in a year. It needs to be slow and steady. And work, you know, slow and steady. Slow and steady wins the race, right? So, you know, we need to bring in some commercial stuff, whether it's Subway's or McDo- whatever, some fast food stuff, five million dollar, whatever. To get these people some more shopping abilities. Um the hardware store is an excellent place and they offer a lot of stuff, but we need more, you know, commercial stuff in Wiggins. I get pounded all the time about a rec center.
We do too.
Kiva Parks, all the drawings for a thirty million dollar rec center.
Yeah.
Which will never happen. At thirty million dollars, but it can happen at a lower cost, in a in a more cost effective way.
I I don't have any supplemental questions on that. Thank you for answering. Anybody else? Nope.
I'm going to.
Question number three.
Um so basically, as you know, in a small town, there's limited funds for parks and uh schools and resources and things like that. Um is there any suggestive ways that you have to kind of increase revenues or things that, kind of ideas that you might have that bring a fresh take to?
I, my opinion. My opinion, you bring in some infrastructure, they bring in tax dollars. And that's how the town generates some income. Pertaining to your question, you threw the, how do we work to gain more money? Kiva Park, there's a lot of people that want to volunteer, so I've grabbed a lot of those people and they helped me volunteer and do a lot of stuff for free. Um obviously, it's not building the town any money, but it's getting things done at a zero cost, so um I. I think you just need to look at it, maybe a tax increase um is always the way to go, but. As we slowly build houses, um water sewer tap rates, we get that revenue. The budget, I don't know what the budget looks like, but it's, there's ways I I feel. To generate revenue and spend in the right ways.
How about, how do you feel about tax incentives for businesses?
Yeah, I'm all for that.
Cause I think, in my opinion, just living here for a long time and we know Morgan or Wiggins is. Has, I think it's actually the highest now property tax rate in all of Morgan County.
Yeah.
So there's a reason why businesses choose Fort Morgan and Brush. It's because of our property tax.
Yep.
So the creative ways that we've talked about is tax incentives, um. Uh like we kind of did with the hotel, we offered them, you know, an incentive plan, a package and.
Yep.
They accepted it and so hopefully we can get that hotel anchored, because I think it goes to be, if we can get the hotel anchored, you're gonna see. That commercial growth you're talking about.
Well, and yeah, whatever it takes to bring stuff in, but we also, as a town, don't want to hurt ourselves and. And not make any revenue off of something. But yeah, if we can give tax breaks to these companies. There's businesses that want to come to Wiggins. Wiggins is an excellent town. Why, you know, they.
We're strategically located.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's it's just a matter of time.
And one way to maintain a conservative growth, but still have growth would be, how do you feel about impact fees on residential? Developments?
I I would be all for that as a town, you know, right now. I I don't know, but I think Thomas's is the last residential place that's gonna be building.
Yeah, and it was actually approved about the same time Kiva Park was.
Outside of that, we don't have anything right now currently. So if that time came when we want, decided to build another development or build on to Wiggins. Yeah, I would be all for that.
Okay. Something I'd look forward, I'm no, I don't look forward to it, but I what's. Basically, what's gonna happen is check and balance. It is.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it has been. For what, three, four years now, five? And at some point in time, I don't think it's gonna level off. I think it's, you know, just like stock market.
Oh, it is, yeah.
Cause right now, Wiggins has seen, our budget's gone up a little due to the the developments.
And and it will, you know, the more you grow, the more your budget's gonna increase.
But when that, when Bruce, what Bruce talked about, when the bottom falls out. We need to have our commercial establishments in place or in the works. To support our, the growth that we've had over the last five, seven years.
Yep.
So, and that's been the focus of of this board as a whole. And it wasn't on a previous board, when we've worked really hard and long hours to to get that into place.
Yep.
So where do you, just in your vision, where do you see Wiggins in twenty years? Or where would you like to see Wiggins in twenty years?
Ten thousand.
We get to ten thousand, we're pushing for Morgan, so I don't, you know. I don't see Wiggins getting that big. Um Wiggins can maintain three, four thousand easily. And still be very. and still be very profitable in a good town, small town still to live in with the amenities that, you know, four thousand people would use, including people coming from Fort Morgan and using our amenities, brush, you know, Ram or wherever. Um, so I don't, I don't see this town growing astronomical and passing Fort Morgan or even getting close to what Fort Morgan's at. Cause Fort Morgan's got a beef plant, the cheese factory, they've got big infrastructure that brings in those people and keeps those people there. So I don't. We have a lot of dairies, but they don't employ a lot of people. So I don't see a lot of growth at Wiggins. And we want to keep it at that small town. And that's just, you know, Wiggins is a small town and that's how I'd like to keep it.
You and me both.
Yes, yes, we're live.
Yeah, you're live. People are tuning in to you right now.
How many? We'll find out. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now we got a challenge for you.
Your phone will be ringing in the morning.
So, uh, I, I, I got a question. It is being recorded. That's not, that's all, that's also not the question. Alright, so it's, alright. So I live in, in this segment of town, a few of us do, or we, we have actually a pretty nice even dis- distribution of all areas of the town, but our infrastructure is ginormously different. That's not really a word, but who cares? Uh, different between where I live and, and Kiowa Park. And I, I think that probably created a little bit of division when you think about all the, and there's no real reason for that when you understand what it means to build a new development. It's going to come with those amenities and can't change the past, but at the same time, uh, what do you say to individuals and what's your plan in terms of helping people maybe that live on, um, Dixon or yeah, or Suzanne Street or, um, Karen or Becky, uh, Street? Or individuals that live near Stagecoach, um, that are having washout problems on their roads all the time. Uh, where the infrastructure that's being built with newer developments coming, how are we going to solve that? What do you see as the way to solve that? And to get our infrastructure up and to get curb and gutter, to get a good drainage plan. Like what are your thoughts on that to get us moving there in that direction?
I think in all reality, I think that would be probably a ten, fifteen year project. You're looking at a lot of money and a lot of time, um, planning and stuff like that. I think just as a town, we need to ensure that those roads are maintained. So that those people are satisfied driving down dirt roads. I know it sucks driving down a dirt road when the people in Kiowa Park have asphalt, curb and gutter sidewalks. I've told some people, you know, that, that was all paid for by the developer. It's, it's not something that they're paying for. And, you know, understand that, that it, it's not coming out of your taxes or anything like that. But it is something that needs to be addressed, um, down the road. I don't know the budget, but with what I hear, it, it's a ten to fifteen year plan. And we just have to ensure that those people have proper roads to drive down. You know, that we maintain the roads properly until we can get to that point where we could have curb and gutter. And then we wouldn't have an issue with that, but it's, it's not going to happen overnight. So it's a very timely process and a lot of planning and a lot of funds go into that.
And one thing that people don't quite realize is, and I lived, I grew up on dirt streets. I mean, I grew up in this town. If you go to Sterling, you'll see what happens when you don't put forth a plan. So it's okay to get your curb and gutter and asphalt. But what are you going to do in twenty years? When that curb and gutter and asphalt is now torn up? That's what a lot of people don't realize is that dirt roads is really easy to maintain and it's cheap. So we have to think about twenty years from now, if we want to put that curb and gutter. By then Kiowa Park is going to need replacement of their curb and gutter.
Maintenance fees are, are high.
So we gotta, that's, that's part of that comprehensive plan in the twenty year growth and forty years. That we gotta get Wiggins set up to where it, it kind of maintains. You know, we put something away every year or fees in place or something that provides that service for those people when it's needed.
Anybody else have anything?
You guys, you two guys are making it very, very tough. That's all I'm going to say. Very good interviews.
Whoever you choose is, I, is going to be fine.
Okay. So maybe you are.
Oh, good. I feel whoever's chosen, I think me and Chad are a lot alike. I've got to know Chad since he's lived in Kiowa Park. So I would have no harsh feelings if it wasn't me.
It just, I could flip a coin and however it come out.
Did you bring it?
And my lighter ain't going to work.
Chris, what, what made you want to, uh, become the president of the HOA? And maybe you were voluntold? Or, uh, is it kind of the same reason that you want to join the, the town council and board trustees?
Kind of, I just had a lot of pressure from people. Cause even before I was the president, I I am big on making an impact in my community and doing what I can to help this community strive to be better. So I have, I've had, I had a lot of pressure on people to, to run to be the president of the HOA. I took that spot over, not going to lie, when I took over the HOA, they were six grand in debt. I don't know how. I raised HOA dues the first year. We are doing well now. So I just, I like to be involved to make change and to see things grow and be the way that they should be. Just as the HOA president, I'm able to, you know, if something I want to do, I go to the board, say, hey, this is my idea. You know, can we approve it? Whether it's spending money to put in trees around Kiowa Park. We do a lot of stuff. We, you know, cleaned up the entrances. We have a guy that mows the entrance for the town. Um, that we pay for out of the HOA. So there's a lot of things that, you know, I have tried to do as the president of HOA to take some responsibility off of Bo and some of the town, because I know what it's like to, to live in a small town. You all, it takes everybody and it really does. Um, Mark's putting countless hours on the trail. And, you know.
And Richard.
And Richard. It's very appreciated and it just, people see that. And that's why I love the position I'm in. Cause I, you know, I can, I have that voice for change and people can come to me. And I'm very personable and, and I will sit down and talk to you for hours if you want. So it's, you know, I've, my grandpa was the mayor of the small town for thirty years that we lived in. And that kind of was a big, you know, I've always wanted to be, you know, like my grandpa. So any chance I can get to serve my community, I want to be there for that.
Yeah, we have somebody calling. My grandma was mayor of this town for sixteen years or something. So so yeah, it's, it's definitely been home. So that's. Question for you. Since you're the president, and I know you only had it for a couple of years, why has not the HOA ever come and talked to the board to, to, uh, if you guys needed something or, you know, to, to work things out?
That would work, like be more descriptive, work what out, what do you?
If, well, I'm sure everything's been rosy, rosy out there, right? Well, I mean.
You know, I, I don't talk to Tom regularly, but I talk to Tom quite a bit. I talk to Bo a lot. Um, I talk to Nick a lot. So I have that relationship with those guys. To to the point where I don't feel I needed to come to the town at, at that point, just because of the relationship I have with Tom. And, and Tom sits here on all the meetings. And so I, that's why I haven't came to the town. There for a while, I was just kind of sitting back and seeing what was going on. I have a lot of great residents in Kiowa Park that are willing to help me do whatever I ask them to do. And so I haven't needed a whole lot from the town. And that's kind of how I wanted it, not that I wanted it to be, but that's how you take some relief of, of Bo and some of that other stuff. And that's why we have somebody mow the entryway. I did the landscaping on the east side of Eleventh Avenue. I'm, uh, trying to get.
In a blizzard.
Right now to buy twenty-five trees this year to put in around the trail. Um, and then in two years, buy ten more and two years, buy ten more. And that way we can start growing that. We're going to put the Frisbee golf course in. So just stuff like that. I've tried to do whatever I can to take some relief off of that. Um, Fourth of July weekend, I was there for the whole setup and the whole tear down. So I'm very involved in, in this town. And I just never felt the need that I needed to come to the town for anything. And that's, you know, why I didn't.
I think maybe kind of to piggyback on that Bruce, uh, cause like you alluded to earlier, you have people show up your door all the time and will come and tell you everything. And I'm sure it's not just Kiowa Park related. It's probably things going on in the town and the water and sewer and, and all that kind of stuff. So you know, that you do kind of have that unique perspective where you can get some of that input because we've been asking for that for a long time from the public, you know, come to meetings, give us your input, give us your feedback. So you may have some of that feedback that would be helpful to us.
Well, and, and just watching the meetings over the last year, people can come to me and I have a pretty good understanding of what's going on. So I can explain, you know, the gifs of what is happening and get them informed or caught up on, on what's going on. When the whole letter went out about Kiowa Park North, my phone blew up. And so there was, you know, I don't, I don't do social media. But it's, you know, having all that information and knowing, you know, what the whole vision was on that, I was able to explain to people, you know, what the process would be and what the vision looked like for the town and what they envisioned it to, to, to happen. Um, so then, you know, I didn't persuade anybody. If you want to vote yes, you vote yes. If you want to vote no, vote no. But this is what, you know, they've talked about and this is what they want to do. So it's up to you guys to vote now.
And that's, that's, that's why we brought it to a town boat and it didn't go the way that it has been in past years. That was the legal way to do it because it is town ground. It's a conservation land. It should have been, it should have been voted on from day one. And it, and we never got the boat, the townspeople never got the boat on Kiowa Park. I mean, that was just, and that, and that's okay. That's okay. They got slid under. They got slid under.
We're going to leave that right there.
And, and you know, it, it didn't, Kiowa Park, we needed Kiowa Park. We didn't have, we, we did.
From the people I talked to and say, Old Town, I think a lot of their views are being changed. I think they were, they had, you know, a lot of upset people when Kiowa Park first started going in. But I think they're starting to realize that Kiowa Park was not a bad thing for Wiggins. And it was something that needed to happen for the town of Wiggins to be able to succeed and move forward without becoming a failure.
But, but something that hurt the town of Wiggins was it never, we got, they never got any say in it whatsoever. Well, that's what, I've stood where you are many, many nights when Kiowa Park was being deliberated and years before that too. I've always come to the meetings for years. Um, that's the reason I got on this board was Kiowa Park. And it wasn't because I was against Kiowa Park. It was because I was against the way it was going in. And the fact that it was just shoved in, kind of like you talked about, grow fast, grow fast, grow fast. That's, that was the mentality back then. Which we needed it and it had to happen. There was nothing, no provisions put in, no no really input of the people. They didn't, they kind of kept it hush, hush. Because I think they felt that the people wouldn't be for it. So there was only a select few individuals here that was like, wait a minute, why are we giving away this? Why are we giving away that when we shouldn't be giving away anything? So that, that was a lot of the animosity of the Old Town. And. And that's what we want to heal. We want to heal that. This board here. Because it's, it's, but that's why we are going to a vote with this Kiowa Park North. If you don't want it. Vote no.
And I think my honest opinion and what I see and hear from people, I think once Thomas's gets in there, there won't be that gap between Kiowa Park and Old Town Wiggins. It's going to be one town. And we're one town, aren't we?
Already one town. That's what we need to. The only thing is it should say Kiowa Park at Wiggins. That was a, that was a big issue too of that. But like I said, we, we as a board is trying to, we want Kiowa Park to know that you're a town of Wiggins and we want the Old Town to know that's a town of Wiggins. Try not to refer to it as much as Kiowa Park as just that's south side of Wiggins. So.
Well, and, and when you have an HOA, I came from Greeley, you have so many subdivisions and that's what you collect. You don't call it Greeley, you call it Homestead Heights, Owl Ridge.
Exactly.
In that, in, in people aren't used to that in small town. Because now you have Kiowa Park, you have Thomas's, you have Wiggins.
Thirty years from now, they're going to be.
It's something that nobody likes change and it changes hard. We all admit it. But it, it needed to happen and it's slowly getting to that point where the, all the residents are coming together and, and we're all one town.
And that's what we want.
Kind of saw that on the Fourth of July. I think the Fourth of July turnout was great. The parade was excellent. The fireworks were excellent. There could have been some more boosts and stuff like that, but that, that's all planning. And it was sprung kind of last second, but.
Bo, Bo done that in what?
Next year. And there, there, yeah, the people turned out and it downpoured and the people stayed. And so it, it's coming back to where we're all a town now and it's not Old Town and Kiowa Park and.
That's great. That's all we need.
And, and we do, and Thomas's will bridge that gap in all honesty. So.
Question for you, young man. In your position, where you at at Kiowa Park, you're a go-to guy. You come here and sit on this board. You're going to have a Kevlar vest most of the time? Because there's some decisions that are made with this, what we have to make. Some folks out there might not, you know, might not like it, but they have a relationship with you.
I'm not scared to step on people's toes.
That it's going to be, that's going to be a tough spot.
And I've had people, they, people know I applied for this and people know I want to be on this board. And I've had people tell me, Chris, you need to stay the president of HOA. You have to. And it's, I'm very torn on if I want to stay the president of the HOA, if I do get a seat on the board. Um, nothing against Kiowa Park, but as much stuff, my job and my landscaping and my rentals that I already have now, you know, my, I'm pretty busy. So, um, if I can be on the town board and Kiowa Park of the town of Wiggins, I'm still serving everybody in Kiowa Park. And what I like about the HOA is the board is excellent. I honestly went to school with three of them. So we have a really good relationship and it's, you know, there's a board for everything. And, you know, when it comes down to it, you, you all talk among, you know, come together as a board and vote on stuff and approve stuff and bring your ideas and everything like that. Does that answer your question?
What part of Nebraska?
I'm from, I was born in Cozad, grew up in Gothamburg.
Where? Cozad?
Yep, Cozad, yeah. I've had a business in Gothamburg for seventeen years.
What was that?
Central Nebraska seed in Kim.
Okay.
Frames that you related to? Kevin, Jim.
Ralph.
Ralph, okay. That's my dad. Okay.
Yeah, we used to farm out, uh, out north of town.
I've seen friends and then it says Nebraska, I thought. I know where you're from.
So you know the, the Schmicklys and all them?
Yeah. Yep. Timmy?
Tim Schmickly and my dad graduated together. Yep.
Okay.
He farms our land right now.
Have you ever?
It's small town.
Have you ever been to Gallagher Canyon? Huh?
Nope.
It's like six miles south of Cozad.
So I was only born there. I, you know.
Must go down to Johnson Lake, eh?
Yeah.
Plum Creek.
Yeah, yeah.
Plum, Plum Creek and.
Yeah.
Gallagher Canyon, they're connected by the tri-county.
Yep.
Good fishing.
Okay.
All right.
No, but this is tough.
Yeah, no kidding.
Yeah, thanks. No, seriously though, thank you. This is.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking your interest and your application.
Yeah.
So what we'll go now is we're gonna deliberate and then Tom will be. In contact with you probably tomorrow. As to what we figure out.
Okay.
What's next and we'll go from there.
And even if I don't get it. You guys can have my phone number and you can call me and we'll work together.
We don't know where you live now, so we can just go.
Yeah, we know, we have it on your application, buddy. I just wish we had two positions. Cause, well, we will. There's, there's, there's gonna be, the election will be in April.
Yeah, April will be here soon.
Yeah, soon.
Snow's flying next week, so.
Yep, yep.
Okay, well, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You got that coin?
Get out your coin.
The deliberation really has to be in the live meeting.
Yeah, I'm confused why, like this doesn't feel right to be able to be able to do deliberations like this.
I don't feel like it is either.
I, I almost feel like we almost have to do a pre-work session, exec session at like six thirty. Because I don't even know what to do. Like, how did we talk about these outputs and then tell them that Tom is gonna reach out tomorrow? They can just come back and watch this.
Yeah, exactly.
Or they could click on it out in the parking lot.
Yeah.
No, I think we shouldn't.
On these. But don't, are we gonna know?
We don't, we don't have to.
Gonna know the results of the week?
We have a pre-session on.
Personally, I need some time to think.
They're both excellent. Both bring some same, we got different.
But then, and we can even know it, but we provide the results, but we wouldn't say it. We'd be basically. Um, Tom would then make that contact.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we decide to vote tonight.
I.
I personally need more time.
I, I, I.
Right now that I'm, I'm, I'm not ready to make a decision just yet because they're both.
That's what I would do.
There, there, yeah, I think we need to, I, I.
Both.
I'm about forty sixty up.
I'm sort of, I, I think I probably could vote, but I wouldn't mind having the opportunity to.
Mole it over a little bit.
So what, what, what should we recommend? I mean, it's.
Can we have a special? Meeting before next Wednesday, executive meeting?
Yeah, you just do a special meeting with an exec.
Seven at six thirty and then or even six.
Probably like six o'clock.
But does, does it have to be an open meeting? Because I thought that's what Tom was saying earlier.
I didn't think.
Yep. Is that why you want us to deliberate afterwards live on the YouTube airwaves?
Executive session.
Well, you don't have to really deliberate if you want to vote. I mean, you know, you guys all know how you feel. Um, you know, whether it's one or the other.
So here's, here's a question. Can the deliberation be an exec, exec session and then the actual vote be in an open meeting? Because I don't have.
Well, it could be due to a board. Yeah, you could probably run an exec session on the, on a board or employee matter. Right? I mean, you can do that and do that. I don't know why that would be a problem.
I know we don't have to vote tonight. I know that for a fact.
Well.
Melinda on, can we ask her?
Is, he has Melinda on? It's worth checking the participant things.
I didn't, I didn't hear that's why I asked this question.
Tom, come back. Oh, Tom, come back. I hope you talked about water already because we need to. There's nobody, yeah, there's nobody. I. Here's my question. After we all take it back, it seems like we're all in agreement that we need to be mulling this over. So actually deliberation might not even make sense right now. Maybe.
You know. But we could think about it next week, show up half hour before. We have these, we have these, everybody makes their vote without even saying a word. Put it together. See what we come up with.
And if, and if we have a majority rule, then you have your person, we can still put them in. Problem is, is. Proper notification and all that stuff to ensure that we can get the individual one sworn in because we need them sworn in at least, right?
Yeah.
Succession.
Or it's a work session.
Yeah, it's a work session. So we, we could actually, so we would swear them in actually on the.
Regular.
Regular, regular meeting on the twenty, but then, then there's no rush. So we have what we have, but I think you're right. I think we just. Take our vote.
Each one of us thinks about it and then.
Leave the paper right here.
The rush is this week today.
Yeah.
So we need to know. By the next meeting.
So we will, we'll need our decision. By the thirteenth.
Yep. Yeah, we can have it all. Like I said, we could vote that night.
We don't need to have a special meeting though for it. No, no, we wouldn't. During the meeting. Right. During the work session and so.
Yeah, just go before the work session. Have these pieces of paper and we just.
And then that way we can just contact them after the work session going. We need you here on the twenty seventh, you sworn in.
That sounds good.
That sounds reasonable.
And after listening to the two applicants. They're quite intelligent and know the processes on a lot of aspects.
Yeah.
As far as what Tom said, bring them up to speed. I don't think that's gonna take.
Long. Not gonna take that long.
Either one, they're gonna grasp. We're only going to two applicants. I feel like we have pretty good applicants.
Yeah. Yeah, we.
Very good.
We, we.
Very good.
I'm just impressed. Wish we had two seats. Because then it would just be kind of. Fun deal. Well, my hope, I guess, is if. Whoever doesn't get selected. Decides in April to try to rerun for an open seat. That's exactly it. They need to get back and run again. That's my hope. It's, you know, that they don't give up, even though they may not have been appointed at this point. That they still give it a try for an election.
Because we've got five seats.
Yikes.
We'll have five seats in April.
Mine's open. I mean, I'm. I might not know.
No.
And that's not the deal with me.
We haven't voted on that.
Can't retire yet.
Do what?
That you're going to.
To vote on the thirteenth? Oh yeah, this is special. Is it on the?
Discussion.
Yes, it is. Decision, so. Are we gonna need to take a roll call of that, Deb?
We don't have to make a decision.
Yeah, you said we don't have to make decisions.
Yeah. It's, yeah, it's only if we.
It's only if we actually made it.
Yeah, then we. Should we do the discussion slash decision? We can make the decision that we will. We convene on the work session. And then make our, our vote tally before that.
Tom can relay that to them that we're gonna decide to vote. Prior to the work session and then get in contact with them.
With that, so do we still want to use these or just write a name on a blank sheet of paper?
No, I think we have to use these.
Do we have to use these?
I don't see why it's, I think we just. Use them anyway. They're already printed. Just put an X. Deb, you're gonna do, I, Deb, you'll do the tally of it, actually, right? They'll do the tally. Why don't we keep, why don't we keep with us or leave them here and then we show up?
Just leave them here.
We'll leave them here.
Just in case we need to vote. Yeah, there's, there's always a chance for a three-three tie, but I, I, I bet by the time we come back together that. Enough of us will probably have a.
That was too close to.
That was too close right now. I, I don't even know how we can vote. I think we need to all review the applications, maybe even review the meeting to watch the.
If, if you look at the agenda. And what, what Tom wrote down, not, not the agenda for tonight's meeting.
What are you looking at on? Which one are you looking at?
Oh, wait, I don't know. When I found. Board of trustees vacant seat.
Yeah, that's the one that he had sent um after I sent you that it was closed.
The process I suggest, and this is what Tom said.
Oh, yeah.
Discuss the interview results.
What you'd like to find convenient.
If we cannot. Make a decision. Then a special election must be held.
Yeah. When I talked to him before the meeting today though. He said we didn't have to make the vote yet today because we're not under that.
That's right here, make a formal appointment prior to the, make the formal appointment during a special meeting prior to the work session.
So that's what his plan was, is he was gonna run a special meeting before. So that gives us that extra week to.
Yeah, but it, it says ask staff to contact applicant.
But they, we gotta get the applicant in.
And request their attendance at the meeting on the thirteenth.
What times are special? Seven?
Seven.
Well, we could just tell them both to be prepared.
Or have them meet us on Zoom.
Yeah, be prepared that, and they might have to attend that meeting on Zoom. And we can decide that way or if they want to be here. Prior to the meeting.
Know what I mean? Just convene beforehand. What do you see, Bruce?
Make the formal appointment during a special meeting prior to the work session on October.
So that way they're involved in the work session.
They're in right away. So that way we could still decide on next Wednesday.
Right, exactly.
And just let them both know that we will make our decision on Wednesday. You want to be here or tune in on Zoom or.
Get ready to get in your car. You look right down the street.
Yeah.
And then we'll swear you in. Um, that would work for me. The only thing that I'm concerned about. Is a three-three tie. And, and so I think we need to have a really serious conversation about this because after tonight, it's actually very feasible that we could have one.
That's why there was four of those.
Yeah, and so, and so. If we have a three-three tie. I mean, the, the act of voting, to me, that means more deliberation. Is needed. We have a three-three tie. We gotta talk that out. You can't just whip out another piece of paper and go, okay, I'll guess again. Doesn't work that way. So I think what Tom is getting at.
But if we had a three to three tie tonight. Then we could.
See, and that's why, so this is gonna be a very strange comment I'm gonna make because I don't even know if I agree with this. But I'm, no, but I'm gonna say it because I'm on the record and this is what it says on the thing. Humble opinion. We should take an initial vote tonight and, and I know that's tough and, 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 and. I'm, I don't even know if I'm ready for that. The reason why I'm saying it is we need to know what's ahead of us if we do have a three-three tie. And, and does that make sense? Because I don't want to be caught in a situation where we're trying to play up with the clock. To make this work against the deadline. That, I don't know if I, I don't know if I feel comfortable with that, but that's, again, that's only my opinion. And the second part is I don't even know if I'm ready to vote. So it makes it kind of, I had to put that out there because that's what it looks like to me.
Right.
That we are intended, so maybe that means we make the uncomfortable decision to deliberate. Right now. Uh, and actually have that communication like it's intended on this message. And actually talk these interviews through. I just hate the fact that it's on this public forum because we're all live.
Right.
This doesn't feel, it doesn't feel like that's how it should be.
Well. My other question would be is, it, it's my understanding that if you can't come to an agreement, then it goes to a.
Special election.
But if, but if we get a three-three tie, that doesn't mean we still can't come to an agreement. There may be somebody that's willing to, especially with us. All feeling strongly about both applicants. We, we may still be able to come to an agreement on that.
Yeah, that's why I wonder, so then the question, Brian, so I agree with you a hundred percent on that. So then the question is, do we leave enough time next week or do we actually still take an initial pulse on it and do some initial deliberation? Right now. That's, that's where I'm hung up.
The only thing with that is with the initial, I, I'd say if we could. Go to executive session for that, we've already approved the agenda. I don't know if we can do that.
No, I don't think you can. I think we're, I think we're stuck without an exact.
And I don't, I don't feel comfortable deliberating on a live session.
So we, so we're gonna have to. But you know what? It's a work session. We could move the start time of the work session backwards to like seven thirty. They give us up to an hour maybe on a special.
Yeah.
We could do that.
Yeah, we can.
Maybe that's what we do. Because I don't think many of us are really comfortable with. The cards for.
I am now. I come to a decision.
I thi- I think the more you, the more you talk, the more I'm comfortable with my decision.
I, I'm ready to vote. But it's, it's a weird place because.
I know it is.
But because you feel a little bit of dignity, right? The fact we had two amazing applicants.
I know.
But the, this is sort of, sounds really stupid. We're actually deliberating right now, even though we're not.
Well, you haven't said anything bad yet.
You know me, Bruce.
It's coming, I know.
Do we have?
So do your vote, either circle X or check. Uh, make sure it's the one that we know which one you're doing. Then um fold it up and I'll collect them.
Huh? Can I borrow your pen?
Does anybody else?
Do we? Probably have to vote this meeting, right?
These are sweats.
I was gonna say, it's not something that we could bring these individually. To Deb and then she could read those results of the meeting and then. Oh, man. On the spot.
Okay. You got that.
It's hoping there'd be a clear.
Uh, it got more clear for me.
Didn't need to.
And if we need to, we can explain. We can actually kind of talk about that once we have a tally. You don't feel pressure. I can take my glasses off. There, you wanted me to say something stupid. I just. Did, I gave. I gave you about thirty seconds. All right. While she does the count, um. I, we still need to make.
I'd like to hear which.
Any jeopardy music.
Can't wait and then we keep trying.
Go ahead.
What, what, what are they, Deb?
Maybe she'll say.
She's gonna tally them first.
She's gonna make the tally and then she's gonna say.
And then she'll, she'll see how much.
She'll say tie.
Wait a minute. Uh-oh. Uh, you need, I gave you like an empty sheet. I think here's, here's mine.
This one has an X on it. I gave her an empty sheet.
That's, that's how you, you know what?
Decisive. I don't know what does.
Hey, David, I think a lot of that happened in the November election last year too. I think there were some empty, empty sheets sitting there.
I told you he was a quarter bubble.
It don't work for Dominion.
I told you he was quarter bubble off.
Okay, so you guys have some work to do.
Is it really?
I love it.
But you know what? We said it live that we thought both applicants were great. And here we are in a tie. Yeah. Yeah, well, my gosh, we would have had. We would have had to win. And I know and guess what? I know who would have won. You're right, Jeff. I could have done an abstain type deal. It would have been over. Um.
Wow.
I'm gonna I I'm just gonna open my mouth because I number one gave you a blank sheet of paper and then on top of it, no, we have a tie. So I might as well speak up first uh, and tell you that I believe one applicant seems more ready right now to be on the board. I think both concern. I I believe one in particular has more exposure to what we're doing and just quite frankly, seems to be more involved with the town. And to me, that matters. And I think when you talk about, I think Jerry, you made a comment in regards to readiness and and being able to pick up on on pieces. I see one applicant as being more ready than the others to do so. And when we're talking about all the big issues we have right now, water, uh, the when we finally get the rate study back in twenty twenty five. Or anything else. But you get my point, right? That's that's what I mean. I I just think that one one in particular, and it's the second applicant, is is is, I think, more ready at this time. At this time for it, but not discounting the other. And I get why it's a tie because there was something the other applicant brought, that first applicant, that really presented professionally with knowledge on water, with knowledge on big on big business. And we talked about the fact that we're gonna have to lure some businesses that have more than twenty individuals involved, right, to make this work. You do will work here. So I get that uh, comment, too, but that's why I voted for the second applicant in this instance. So just putting that out there. That you're more ready.
And I had nothing against Chris. But I voted for Chad. Because Chris is well representing Kyle Park, and that would, I think Chad that gives him a more of an open mind because he don't have any pressure on him from.
That makes sense.
I mean, and I they're both great, both great applicants. I mean, that very, very tough decision.
It was. Yeah, it is tough.
That's why I said what I said about him being representative on two sides of the street because of what he said about when that northern part of the Kyle Park came out, his phone rang off the wall. People turned to him. They go to him, good or bad. Put him in a position here.
That's a conflict of interest is what you said.
It can be. It can be, but is it fair to him?
Yeah, he also mentioned that he would be willing to potentially step down from that role.
Down from that role, too.
To to put this role first and foremost. So yeah, that's important, too.
That that was my um that was my one reason that I wasn't gonna vote for him was because of his position on
on the HOA.
On the HOA. But then I'm kind of like David. I felt he's more more up to speed and more involved in what's going on in the town than the other one. I'm not discounting the other one at all because he's an amazing candidate, but I felt it seems like the second applicant was more ready, I guess.
Yeah.
But at the same time, it was weighing on my mind that the conflict, and I know that he said
but I don't know whether they vote or can you step down immediately? I mean, how's that?
I'm not sure. Not sure how that works, so.
You have another boat.
So that's why I voted the way I did. It was very hard.
This is hard.
Mark, I haven't heard any comment.
Like I said before, I the the candidate that I I voted for, I I thought brought an interesting perspective. You know, ha- having experience is like having a bag of tools and know how to use them. You know, you can have tools, but if you don't know how to use them, you are not as an effective individual. Um, you know, I I personally know individuals that would be uncomfortable around a hammer. Um, a- and they tell me so, you know, I don't want to be handed the tools, so please don't ask me to do those kind of things. So I say, okay. So I try to look for how can you be a benefit even if you're you're not the perfect candidate or or you are the perfect candidate? What skills maybe I don't have that you could uh benefit the board to equal the board as as a whole toolbox, you know, of experience if if you were to think it that way. And and quite honestly, I I wish I could have voted for both of them. Um, but again, my hope is is that whoever I didn't vote for would try to step up and get elected in April.
Yeah. Yeah.
So who did you vote for?
Chad.
Is there anybody anybody else? Or did we actually cover almost everybody in this one?
Um, no, I I kind of just echo some of the same thoughts, especially what you said, David. Um. I I thought both of them would be great. Um. I did think one was a little more ready, too, and just this position's kind of key to build relationships and have relationships with the town, and I think one individual already has that um, and is ready to step into that. Not saying the other one can't because I I think they definitely would be a good fit for that, but um, personally, I voted for Chris as well. But yeah, I I think either one either one would be a good fit.
So who's got the coin?
Well, I mean, we got three more.
You got a fresh one?
I think take a let's take a five minute recess.
Just for. Can we take a five minute recess?
Yeah, we can do. Yeah.
Let's take a five minute recess.
Outside gets fresh air, think about it, mull it over, come back and vote again.
Everybody take a bio break if they need it.
I
Are you ready to give the card recording?
We're good.
Okay.
Okay, we're back. Recession's over.
So Deb, we had a three to three tie.
Correct. Three to three tie.
So now we're gonna vote.
We're gonna vote again.
We're gonna vote again. I did it correctly this time, I promise. I do appreciate everybody taking the time to deliberate. Here.
It's tough.
It's tough, but it's, but it's worth it.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the key.
High pay, huh? Just a question, is Tom called you guys about?
I didn't bring my phone, so I wouldn't.
No, about the, uh, pay for the board?
No, no.
Okay.
Is that a topic?
Yeah, cause it wasn't handled correctly when the raise was voted on.
Oh, boy.
Okay, so we settled the, the vote, if you are ready.
So, we have, okay.
Yes. Do you want me to announce it?
And roll, yeah, roll call it out, or how many? I'd say, name them off, and don't have to say who voted for what, but.
If you haven't named them off, yeah.
Yeah.
No, who, who got that many votes?
Yeah.
Okay, um, Chad Forbes has five votes and Chris Townsend has one.
So that makes it official.
Well, after contact, I think, but, uh, so we need to give, uh, Tom direction at that point too.
Yep, when you get it, when Tom comes back from the, from the meeting, I'll let him, you can let him know and.
Okay.
They can get a hold of, he can get a hold of Chad and. I would have to, I would have. Have, have Tom call both of them actually, and just give them the. Sentiment from the board that it was a very hard decision, and it was a tie to begin with, and.
It was, it.
So, and we encourage, uh, Chris to run in April, and. I also, if he's watching, encourage him to come to the board meetings as well.
Yep, yep. Continue to participate, be more involved and.
And I would like to hear his input, you know, if, if.
Even if he doesn't need us for something, to still have the input from the HOA, lot on record.
Right, I mean, he can, he, he gets.
I think there's, I still think there's some misunderstanding with Kyle Park, some of the residents of how, how Kyle Park was initially. Come about and what was included in the original plating of Kyle Park to what somebody's dream of Kyle Park would be. And if we could get the people to understand that, I think it would ease a little bit of their tensions that they have.
Absolutely.
For this upcoming election. They would understand the process that we were going through to do this.
Yeah, and, and there were a lot of factors that were even outside of the town's control, even back then, with the real estate agents and the individuals involved. It, but at the same time, this board has done a good job trying to represent where we are currently, and that's why the ballot measure is out there. So we're gonna do what we're gonna do, and, and individuals get a chance to vote and have their say.
Yep.
And that will also put some of the tension away, is just to have that voice.
Yeah, they get their voice, so.
Yep.
Let us know how you feel.
Yeah.
Come November.
That's it. Then we'll go from there. We don't have to, so this is what's strange, we don't make any motions at this time, do we?
No, it's just a decision, the decision was made, it's voted, and. Now it's up to, up to Tom to get in contact, and then prior to the work session, we can do a official swearing.
We don't have to take a roll call on the winner, do we?
No. We technically have it, because she, she has the.
Yeah, the official.
And that will be public, so if, um, like, for Morgan Times publishes that or something like that.
Yeah, I can make it, I mean, it's, it's official that Chad Forbes is the new trustee on the Town of Wiggins.
And we'll be sworn in.
Next week. We'll be sworn in next week.
Thank you, everybody.
I would, I'd like to thank everybody on the board. I mean. We're, we're trying to go in the right direction, and we're trying to go as one. Instead of this guy wants this, this guy wants this, this guy wants this. And I mean, there's nothing wrong with that. We wanna hear opinions. You know, we always get things hashed out.
Yep, tonight's another example of that.
Yeah, I wanna thank you, Bruce, for making that, pointing that out, that this board. We don't always see eye to eye, but we come, we come to terms with how we can get to where we need to, to be, the end game. And we do it.
And it's always, it's always for the people, that's who we represent, is the people.
And we, we, we respect each other's opinion, and I really appreciate that too, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I also wanna say thank you to Tom Aker for making all this happen, you know, it's, it's not always easy to, to be the, uh. Person that's doing the, uh, stuff in the background. He, he does a lot that's not always seen.
Yeah.
Um, and I really appreciate what he does, so.
And thank you as well, Deb.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Deb too.
I talked to Tom on Sundays, and he's, he's working on Sundays, he's. He, he always calls me when he's on his way home, and a lot of times, it's this time of night.
Yep, yep, that's about the time I get calls too.
Yeah, yeah, so appreciate all of his hard work. He obviously, uh, cares about Wiggins, so.
Exactly.
Okay.
How about that, Ford?
Alright, well, time is eight fifteen, and the, uh, special board meeting is hereby adjourned.
And now we don't even know what to do, we're just frozen.
We're just sitting here.